Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing for Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Sarah Pell. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary discussion by Pittsburgh City Council. Bill number 646, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the John P. Robin Civic Building, located at 200 Ross Street in downtown Pittsburgh. Bill number 682, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as the Hanauer Rosenberg House, located at 417 Lockhart Street in Deutstown in the city of Pittsburgh. And Bill number 683, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as the Spring Hill School, located at 1351 Damas Street in Spring Hill in the city of Pittsburgh. That concludes the list of legislation up for preliminary discussion. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Hello. Good day. Welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing for Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, relative to bills 2020-0646, 2020-0682, and 2020-0683. My name is Deborah Gross. I am the Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs and the Councilwoman for District 7. And for the record, it looks like we are joined also by Council President Teresa Kael Smith. And will the clerk please read the title of the bills?
Bill 646, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure on the Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the John P. Robin Civic Building, located at 200 Ross Street in downtown First Ward of the city. Bill number 682, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as the Hanauer Rosenberg House, located at 417 Lockhart Street in Deutstown in the 23rd Ward. Bill number 683, resolution providing for the designation as a historic the Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as the Spring Hill School, located at 1351 Damas Street in the Spring Hill 24th Ward of the city.
Wonderful. I appreciate it. And so we are operating remotely. And but we are here joined in our session by Sarah Quinn from the City Planning Department. And we will allow her, as we usually do, to provide a short presentation on each of these sites. We're going to keep it a little short. And also, I'm going to tell our technical support director, President Smith actually isn't in the panel. She's in the public. I can see her, but she needs to get in. And so we have registered speakers and I'm not sure if they've joined us on the line or not. So we'll start with their presentations and maybe the public testimony will be able to join in and we'll be able to get President Smith in as well. Sarah, could you introduce yourself and give us your official title and then give us our presentations?
Sure. My name is Sarah Quinn. I'm the Preservation Planner for this city of Pittsburgh. And the item I have before you guys right now is historic designation for the John P. Robin Civic Building. It's also known as 200 Ross Street. And I would just like to mention that this nomination is done in conjunction with the environmental compliance related to the city, the URA, and the Housing Authority vacating the property for a new location. This is in association with HUD, HUD funding and HUD environmental compliance through the Housing Authority. So with that, I mean, I think we're all familiar with this building. Interestingly, it's a steel frame. It's a building steel frame construction that has cladding of red brick with sandstone trim. Stress, there's a dressed ashlar foundation which rises in height as the grade of the Ross Street descends to the south. A stone arch leads into a small square vaulted exterior vestibule. Three granite steps ascend the landing before a revolving oak door surmounted by a divided transom. Pair of wrought iron gates at the entrance of the vestibule three close to secure it. And there is a large ornate wrought iron sconce-like fixture on each side. Framing the vestibule entrance is a stone relief with numerals 19 and 07 in heraldic shields, one in each upper corner representing the date of the building's construction. On the exterior of the building, the arched eighth floor window openings in base two through six echo those on the first floor and an eighth floor cornerstone is subtle with Tudor ornamentation terminating in the original composition. The rear facade is flush brick with individual punched window openings arranged singly in pairs or in groups of three. There's no stone ornamentation on the rear of the building. Jones and Lachlan designed the steel structure of its office building at its Keystone Works structural plant, which moved from the south side to Second Avenue in the Hazelwood portion of the facility in 1908. The company engaged architects McLaurin Spaar to design the exterior skin. And the firm was active between 1901 and 1922. The Jones and Lachlan management eventually relocated from 200 Ross Street to more modern accommodations at Gateway Center in 1952. In the meantime, the sector of downtown between Granton Ross Streets, south of Fifth Avenue, had become a government center of the Pittsburgh region. Thus, the presence of government offices in the blocks near the Jones and Lachlan building was well established by the time the company vacated. Therefore, it made sense for the city to relocate offices there. The Historic Review Commission felt this property was significant under criteria three, which is an exemplification of architectural type, style, or design. The Johnson-Lachlan Building is a high-quality, high-integrity example of a Jacobean Revival style of architecture applied to a major commercial building. Characteristics of this style include columns, pilasters, rounded arches, curved and scrolled, rather than stepped repeat gables and parapets. The Commission also felt this property was significant under criteria four, which means that it was the identification of a work of a significant architect. The significant architect was the firm of McLaurin Spaar, who have a long history of doing projects in Pittsburgh. One, in fact, one of their, one of their last commissions that they did in the Jacobean style was Langley High School. Finally, the building has only had minimal alteration on the exterior. The original, the windows were replaced, but the openings and trim all remain the same. In fact, there was a replacement of the original oak revolving door in the front, but it was done nearly identical to what was in there. So that's basically equivalent what was there. So that's what I have on 200 Ross Streets, the John P. Robin Civic Building.
I assume we'll do all presentations and then, and then public speakers because I'm not sure that any have joined. Does anyone, Madam Clerk, do you see the public speakers have joined?
One has joined, Mr. Matthew Falcone. He's online.
Oh, Matthew.
So Matthew's here. I don't actually know if he's got comments about all three or just one. I'm sure he's able to wait a little longer. We're only nine minutes in. So Sarah, why don't we just do presentations on all three?
That sounds like a good plan. Okay. So the next property I have for you all is the Hanauer Rosenberg House. This place, this residence is located at 417 Lockhart Street in the Deutstown Historic District. So it's interesting that this property already enjoys the protections of a historic district. However, the owner wanted to grant it an elevated status because of its individual significance. So. Apparently, 417 Lockhart Street was built between 1888 and 1889 while members of the Kaufman family also owned property along Cedar Avenue and Lockhart Street at the same time. Carolyn Nelson, who owned, the family owned the property, was the wife of William Nelson, who was the first stained glass manufacturer in Pittsburgh. The Nelson family lived in Woods Run section of Allegheny City and rented 417 Lockhart Street to tenants. So it's not unlike what many families do these days, build property, rental property for tenants to supplement their income. The earliest occupants of the house were Hugo Rosenberg, a merchant, and Pauline Hanauer Rosenberg, who founded the National Council of Jewish Women, its Pittsburgh section and other Pennsylvania sections while living in the house. The 417 Lockhart Street was used as a rooming house in the early part of the 20th century. And as a middle, as middle-class families moved out of the immediate neighborhood, it's thought that the house may have had, may have been its most crowded in 1940 when it had 12 people living in it. The Historic Review Commission provided a positive recommendation to City Council on this property. And they felt that it was significant under criteria one, which is its identification with the person of who significantly contributed to cultural development in the city of Pittsburgh. As Pauline Hanauer Rosenberg was born in Allegheny City in 1863 to a prominent proponent of education. Her parents were Henrietta and Meyer Hanauer. She was educated at Pittsburgh Central High School and belonged to Rhoda Shalom Congregation, Western Pennsylvania's oldest Jewish congregation, and one instrumental in shaping the national Reform Judaism movement. Her husband, she married Hugo Rosenberg. In Allegheny City and Pittsburgh, Rosenberg served on the boards of Allegheny General Hospital Ladies Auxiliary, Pennsylvania Federation of Women's Clubs, and was the president of the Pittsburgh Women's Club Civic Club, Needle Guild, Free Kindergarten Association, Tenement House, and Public Bath Committee. So she was probably instrumental in putting together our bath houses that we recently made historic. So although Rosenberg's involvement and leadership had considerable impact on Pittsburgh, it was her efforts founding, shaping, and leading the National Council of Jewish Women that had a state, national, and international impact. Prior to the founding of the NCJW, no such organization exists on the national level for Jewish women. Even though there was no national organization in place, Hannah G. Solomon in Chicago was asked to organize the participation of Jewish women in the Chicago World's Fair of 1893, when it was discovered that the participation would consist of pouring coffee and other hostess duties, Solomon and her recruits, which included Rosenberg, walked out of the festivities. During the course of the exposition, the women founded the NCJW and the first such national organization of its kind existed. After the exposition, Rosenberg played an instrumental role in establishing the NCJW's national presence as well as helped mold how the organization functioned. Referred to as the Pennsylvania State President, she was responsible for organizing every section of the Commonwealth, including Pittsburgh, where she served as President, Boyle City, Altoona, Scranton, Philadelphia, Bradford, as well as Youngstown in Washington, DC. Rosenberg also served as NCJW's first national vice president and chaired several national committees. She had a hand in forming the NCJW's Immigrant Aid Society and the Committee for Jewish and Non-Jewish Blind, today known as the Pennsylvania Association for the Blind, both of which still exist today in different forms, providing benefits statewide. In 1905, Rosenberg assumed the presidency of NCJW and oversaw one of the most difficult transitional periods of the organization's history. Prior to her presidency, the organization was primarily a coalition of local sections independently focused on a variety of self-directed initiatives. Under Rosenberg's presidency, the NCJW became centralized and its immigration and its immigration aid work, for which the council was to be nationally and internationally known, rose to prominence. Because of this, the NCJW established itself as the undisputed leader in the efforts of the white slave trade, so much so that the federal government sought their help in addressing this issue. To facilitate this work, the NCJW founded the Department of Immigration Aid upon invitation, established a permanent office in Ellis Island, as well as every other entry point for immigrants throughout the country. So, so the building itself is wonderfully intact. Some of the original stained glass is still in place and the carved terracotta. So that's, that's what I have for you on the Rosenberg, Hanauer Rosenberg. Very interesting ladies.
I will interrupt you just a minute as Chair, just to draw the public's attention to the packets, which I always do because they're, they're so informative that they'll be listed with these pieces of legislation on our permanent legislative record. And yes, I'm just learning here as I'm reading along with you about what a leader Rosenberg was in the really important national social work around the kind of like public housekeeping was sometimes referred to in this era of women's initiatives to improve civic life and public life and work on lots of kind of social problems that they felt that the federal, state, or local governments weren't, you know, doing enough of, right? Establishing hospitals, establishing parks, working on, you know, to assist immigrants communities especially. And including this work here is really significant. So thank you for capturing that. I didn't know about our connection to this movement.
Well, and just, just to mention this, this is going to, should you, should council move this forward? This will be only the second individual landmark associated with a woman in the city.
Well done.
The first one is Carol Peterson's house. So.
Fabulous. My former constituent, important figure for all of us and interested in history and preservation on her own. And I noticed that you point out that many of the other physical sites associated with Ms. Rosenberg were demolished and are just currently parking lots or vacant properties. So that it's important to save this one. Okay. So I wasn't going to digress to talk about the submissions. So let us move on to the last one. We're on good schedule here. We're, we're doing about five, six minutes on the presentation. So that's a good.
Awesome. Okay. Well, let me get a drink here real quick.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. I'll give you a minute and pull up my records on Spring Hill Elementary, our next one.
Okay. So this, this, this presentation is going to be on this Spring Hill School, which is being nominated with the blessing of Pittsburgh Public Schools. Um, the property is a one to two-story brick and stone classical revival elementary school building in the Spring Hill neighborhood of Pittsburgh. It faces north on Damas Street at its T intersection with Rockland Street. The school consists of two wings, the western wing consisting of the first story of an original two-story building construction in 1896 and renovated in 1936. The school's eastern section is a substantial two-story addition constructed in 1908. The two wings are joined by a one-story connector, which also dates to 1908. Both wings are rectangular and planned and constructed of red brick with sandstone foundations. The main entrance surrounds the central three bays of this section. The main entrance surround spans the three bay, three, spans the central three bays of this section on the first floor. And it's also a white glazed terracotta. The design of the surround encompasses concentric arch springing from a telescope series of squad engaged piers with Sullivan-esque capitals, a frieze containing the words "public schools" in relief and two round lozenges with the year of 1908 in relief. So the original two-story brick Spring Hill Elementary School was constructed as the seventh ward public school in 1896 on land purchased from Damas Lutz, who was the farmer that owned it. The neighborhood of Spring Hill was named for the natural underground springs of the area and was settled by predominant German immigrants. Damas Lutz was a member of the Board of Directors of the German Bank, German National Bank of Allegheny and several acres of land in the area, which is now called, I believe, Vineyard Park. The property, the Historic Review Commission provided a positive recommendation to City Council and they felt that the property was significant for several different reasons. The first, the first criteria, if you would, is with the identification as the work of an architect, designer, and here builder. Spring Hill School is associated with an architect known as Marion Steen, who served as in-house staff, in-house staff architect for the Pittsburgh Board of Education from 1935 to 1954, known primarily for his Art Deco designs. Steen faced unique challenge in renovating the older Spring Hill School to meet the educational requirements of the modern era. While there, oh, Steen graduated from Carnegie Institute of Technology in 1908 and worked for Henry Hornbosser, who you've all heard before. In 1922, he joined a family firm of architects, his family, his father. While there, he began his school design career with Oliver Prospect and Heron Hill Schools. As the city's official school architect for almost 20 years, he designed a series of fireproof structures in the nationally popular Art Deco style, including L E T S H, while in Concord Schools. Steen was able to attain a high point, a high point in the evolution of Pittsburgh Public School design by consistently meeting a new educational requirement in succession of high-quality architectural designs. He retired from the Board of Education in 1954. The Commission also felt that the school was significant because it was associated with important cultural or social events in the history of the city. Spring Hill School is associated with the history of public school design in the city of Allegheny and Pittsburgh. The way in which Spring Hill School has been added to, subtracted from, and altered since the construction, illuminate three different, three distinct historical eras of public school buildings in the cities. The ward-based era, the consolidated era, and the federally funded era. Both the 1896 and 1908 Spring Hill Schools were constructed under the first of these eras. Prior to 1911, each ward of both Allegheny and Pittsburgh had its own separate school board elected by constituents and charged with the complete operation and maintenance of the schools. Only two other major cities in the United States, Boston and Philadelphia, followed the ward-based school board system. By 1907, when Pittsburgh and Allegheny were united, there were 61 sub-districts, 46 in Pittsburgh and 15 in Allegheny. And 366 citizens supervised the city's elementary schools. The multiplicity of the authority provided by the city with a chaotic school system and a diverse array of school buildings. Spring Hill School's first building was constructed by the city of Allegheny and its second by the city of Pittsburgh under the ward-based system. In 1911, a centralized consolidated school board was formed and hired the superintendent of buildings. That was, excuse me, that was Marion Steen. In 1911, the centralized school board formed and hired superintendent of buildings to oversee building construction and maintenance. This era was dominated by Scottish-born artist and mechanical engineer named James Bonner, who held the position of superintendent of buildings from 1919 to 1934. During this period, the school contracted with independent architectural firms for designs that appears to have been taking minor under renovations to Spring Hill School. This system lasted until 1934, when in the depths of the Depression, the city sought help from the federal government to maintain improvement, maintain and improve its schools. From 1935 to 1954, the centralized public school board employed an in-house architectural staff funded by the Federal Public Works Administration. Marion Steen was that gentleman, I mentioned him earlier. And he was the assistant superintendent of buildings and was the architect from 1936 until he left in 1954. In the early 20th century, there was an educational policy that was influenced by the theories of a gentleman named John Dewey and dictums of a woman, William Wort, who was a superintendent in Gary, Indiana. And Wort believed that schools should be, quote, "an idealized microcosm of the real world" in which personnel trained, in which trained personnel provided as many activities for students within the school of past generations and had experienced through the apprenticeships and household industry. So they took on a little bit more of a technical school feel. So there were changes made at that time as well. So as far as integrity in the building goes, there have been many, many changes over the years. But, but we still feel that it's a moderate level integrity. The intact nature of the 1908 wing and the date of the alterations of the original building in 1936 reflect a significant period in the history of Pittsburgh Public Schools in general and Spring Hill School in particular. This may have for you.
Thank you very much. And there are some really interesting additional notes about that technical school adaptation, where there's separate functions for sewing or shop or theater and auditoriums. And it almost reminds me of how we're trying to get back to communities and schools where there was all of these spaces that were designed to be accessible amenities for the community. So I'll leave that again for another kind of discussion. We don't need to have in the public hearing, but some really interesting history there. Thank you also. Madam Clerk, do you see any public speaker? I can't see the names, I think. I only see the panel or something.
Yes.
Maybe I'm not seeing it all.
Still here, waiting.
Okay, so that concludes our presentations and I'll turn to testimony from the public. And then after that, we will, we'll see if any members have any questions. Does that sound right for everybody? Councilwoman Strasburg, is that okay with you? So you're the member here? All right. So I'm going to, I just lost on all my screens my cheat sheet, but I believe my registered speaker is Matthew Falcone with Preservation Pittsburgh.
Yes.
All right. Let's have Matthew. Do I need to do anything or someone going to do it for me?
No, David has it. He has it in already. He's in.
Okay, Matthew.
Hi.
Hi. How are you? You have the floor.
I'm doing well. Thank you. Thank you for having me here today. And I'll keep everything very brief, just to say that it's been an absolute joy to work with the Housing Authority of the city of Pittsburgh, as well as the Urban Redevelopment Authority in the city to have 200 Ross formally recognized, as well as the public school system and the Spring Hill Civic League in partnership on those nominations. I will say that, though, it is a particular point of pride that I was able to elevate Ms. Rosenberg's residence for landmark status. And supporting that has been the National Council of Jewish Women. It's Pittsburgh section, the National Jewish American History Museum in Philadelphia, as well as a few other national and state entities. It's very clear that she and the women of the National Council of, or National Council of Jewish Women made an indelible mark on the country and the city. And it is absolutely, has been a wonderful adventure to be able to rediscover what that history is and how they have fundamentally shaped our lives for the better. And it, with respect to council, I very much appreciate your consideration and all of these landmarks. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. and all of these landmarks and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I'll I'll let Councilman Strasburger ask questions. I don't think, I don't see any other public speakers, first of all, so we can, I'm happy to have interrogative Matthew as the nominator, as very often at our council table, rather than kind of at the, in the speakers, um, public speakers section of chambers. So we're, we're gonna activist as if he is at the table with us, um, if we don't have other speakers waiting. Madam Clerk, do you see the other, the only one pre-registered I have is Minister J. Dominique Coleman.
Right, she's not available.
Okay, so let's, we can, I'm happy to invite Matthew basically to the table um and see if he's got questions, if anyone has questions for Sarah or Matthew.
I actually don't have any questions. I just appreciate all of your good work on these, um, on these three items. So thank you.
Oh, great. So I'll just invite, since we have a few more minutes, we're just at two o'clock. We don't want to go over schedule because I know that all the members and others have a lot packed in today. So I don't want to draw things out too long, but um, I'll just invite Sarah or Matthew to add anything if you weren't able to add it in in your presentations.
Well, I actually, I would just like to add that the Hanauer Rosenberg House was just awarded a um state historic marker from the State Historic Preservation Office in Harrisburg, one of those blue and gold ones like you see on the side of the road.
And that was actually on my mind. I was gonna use that as one of my follow-up questions. So thank you. That was my first thought. I learned so much from those. And it's certainly about historic events and historic figures um when I'm out in Pittsburgh. Um, so that's great news.
Yeah. Yeah, it's exciting.
Do those markers also link to additional information elsewhere now that we're in the modern world and you can get information, not just on a sign on the street, but.
Remember, we're the, we're the historic people. Probably not.
Probably not, no. Only retro steampunk methods for us. No websites. All right, great. Um, but again, just as a reminder to the public, these are wonderful informational packets if that help you to do further research. They're available on our um city council Legistar Legislative Archive Portal, web portal. Um, Mr. Falcone, anything additional comments you might have to say? I think you're still with us. You're muted.
Yeah, I got muted and then.
Sorry, David. I've invited Matthew.
No, that's all right. Um, no, just, I, I thank you for all of the support in these nominations, um, especially with Sarah because I know typically we, we tend to go through kind of one or two at a time and there's been quite a number um going through the system and it's really been made possible with um the support of Sarah and the support of Sharon. Um, and it's really been um, uh, a wonderful adventure. So thank you for that.
Right. I'll just conclude by saying I so much enjoy having these historic sites um listed and protected in the city because I help, I think it helps us um know who we are for, for good or for bad, you know, for, in all of our history and um really is uh an important part of Pittsburgh that people often note um that it's different from, you know, newer cities or newer communities um that this is a place where a lot of things have happened and it's one, it's wonderful to capture those um and to know how we have connections either to greater national events or even just even the significant places and events that make us uh make up our own history. Um, so thank you for your, both of you, for your work. Um, and having exhausted, oh, also just for future reference for the, for the public, members will be able to see this session, of course, if they've had to miss it. There were a lot of conflicts in scheduling today. Um, and also we've all got the same, these full packets in our email boxes so we could be able to review them before we, we have to vote on them. Uh, but I will conclude by saying that we have exhausted the public, uh, the business of the public hearing. Um, and since there are no other members, I will just declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.